Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the special board meeting on May 10, 2021. I'd like to call the special board meeting to order. Mrs. Gober, can we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Lozey.
Here.
Dr. Beckhulley.
Here.
Dr. Donahue. Mr. Nyman. Mrs. Patrick.
Here.
Mrs. Schenkel. Dr. Shively.
Here.
Mrs. Sinkler. Mr. Fashionetto.
Here.
There are five members present.
Thank you. If you could please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if you could please join me for a moment of silent meditation, I would also like to pass on the information that Russell D. Antron passed away last Wednesday, May 5. He served on the BASD Authority and the Bethlehem Area Votech Authority since 2011. Please keep Russ's family in your prayers and thoughts. Thank you. At this time, we will have courtesy of the floor for agenda items only. Please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone at home who's watching via Zoom can type in your question into the chat box or raise your hand to speak. There will also be a second courtesy of the floor at the end of the meeting. Okay, seeing no speakers at this time, we're going to go and we have no regular or special board meeting minutes to approve. Mr. Fashionetto was not here for the president's communication. Dr. Roy, do we have any superintendent's report?
Not tonight.
Okay, is there any unfinished business before the board? Okay. Next up, we have the recommendation of the administration, 7.01, adoption of the 2021-22 proposed BASD budget. May I have a motion for item 7.01?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Shively. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lozey. Any discussion or changes to? I'm sorry, any discussion on this topic?
If I could just give a little context and review and can we have the record show that Mrs. Schenkel is joining the meeting now? I said that because we're so spread out that you might not see it. So, yeah, so just for the board members, before you vote, just a couple of reminders. This is the proposed final budget. So under the law, we have to approve a proposed general fund budget a month before you vote on the final budget. And so, and you're really approving the expenditures, the number, the dollar amount of expenditures in this proposed budget. Things will change between now and June. You know, the state government, we might have a state budget. This budget assumes no change in the basic education subsidy or the special ed either, or some special ed. Some special ed. So there could be additional revenue from the state, for example. So there will be changes until the end. Wanted to remind the board that in January, when we first presented the preliminary budget, the our, this week came in with a very tight conservative budget with expenditure increases of only two around, around 2.3%, less than 3%. And that was a very tight. So that's, that includes, you know, salaries, healthcare, all of our educational expenses and so forth. And we've maintained that tight budget going through, but what changed was the federal stimulus or what we call the ESR money that came through for the federal government that becomes part of the general operating budget. But what's important to remember is that's, you know, you put it on revenue on one side and expenditure as the other. So it cancels out. So it increases our total expenditure number because we're putting in those S or that S or money, but it's in revenue and expenditure. So it levels out. So this is a very, very tight budget when we started. Despite that, we still have a $7.7 million gap between our anticipated revenues and the proposed expenditures. So we still have time to make the final decision on how to close that. That's not the decision tonight. The decision tonight is really approving this budget and the total expenditures. We can, we'll make adjustments going forward. I'm proposing, I'm recommending to the board that in the end, assuming we get no additional state funding, that we split the difference on that $7.7 million gap and split the difference between 2% millage hike increase and a, and then taking 3.8 million from the fund balance. So that would be, that would generate the 7.7 million that we need to close the gap. Any increase in state funding, and there is some hope for that, would, would help close the gap and reduce the millage increase or and or how much we need to take from the fund balance. So that's kind of the, I don't know, the parameters of the field that we're playing on at this point with the budget. We were asked at the, at a prior meeting of the board to come up with some estimates of the, what's the average tax increase? For the, I should say for the median, for the median valued home. And for a 2% tax increase, it is $89.32, to be precise, because Mrs. Gober would want me to be precise. And the, and that's North Hampton County. And remember, two counties, one has reassessed, different millages, millage rates. In Lehigh County, a total 2% average district wide would be a $28.34 average bill increase. So North Hampton County, $89.32 for the year, at a 2% increase. And Lehigh County, $28 per property, $28.34. And then, you know, we can go higher than that, we can go lower than that, but that's, that's where we are and the board has that information. Any questions for me on that?
I just wanted to add, just to follow up about those federal funds, there's been a lot of confusion about how we can slot those. And as you said, they're sort of coming in and going out. We discussed in our earlier budget meetings, those are for one-time expenditures. And even we got instruction from the state to explicitly do that. And so just to pass that information on to parents, I was talking with Mrs. Gober before the meeting, and we'll make that letter that we received from the state available on the BASD Proud Parents page. So it's clear sort of how we're doing our thinking around our budget, even with those federal dollars coming in, just so people can understand how those are sort of part of this conversation, but very much set aside from this conversation at the same time.
Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, seeing that, Mrs. Gober, maybe we have a roll call vote for 7.01.
Mrs. Schenkel?
Yes.
Dr. Shively?
Yes.
Mr. Lozey?
Yes.
Dr. Beckhulley?
Yes.
Mr. Fashionetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you very much. Not seeing any new or miscellaneous business at this time. We'll have a courtesy of the floor now. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on any item may come to the podium. Please state your name and address, or for those at home on Zoom, please feel free to raise your hand or type in a question. And not seeing anything, we'll move on. Are there any items for open forum for the board? Okay, I would just like to add a big thank you to Mrs. Bachman and her IT department team for setting all of this up. This is amazing, very safe and very effective. So thank you so much for all your hard work and for the work of your team. Okay, seeing nothing else, may I have a motion to adjourn this special meeting?
So moved.
Second, Dr. Lozey, thank you. Second, Dr. Shively. Thank you so much. We're going to roll right now into the Board Facilities Committee meeting.
Yet, welcome to our Facilities Committee meeting. We can start with a courtesy of the floor for agenda items only. If anyone has comments or you want to add your, your comments to the chat or the Q and A box. If there are any online, let me know, but I don't see anyone here in front of us. So with that, we'll go on to our discussion items. First one is 2.01, an energy update.
Thank you very much. We're gonna, we have no energy update for the evening, and so I'm gonna just step aside and can turn it over to the next item.
All right, so then we can go right on to 2.02, the PFM update, the 2011 general obligation bond. Our, we got a preview of this last month, but now we'll get the update.
All right, well, good evening. Good to be back here in person. I'll just be real brief this morning. So up on the screen, we do have kind of the one-page handout. If you could go to the next page, please, this is basically just a follow-up from our meeting about three weeks ago, where we updated the board with the refinancing opportunity, looking at one of your bond issues that's currently outstanding and we're approaching the call date or the date that we're legally allowed to refinance it. So we wanted to bring that to the board's attention. This evening again is just another update, and if all goes well, then your bond counsel would be here in two weeks for the actual resolution. But just to kind of recap the opportunity again, and it first started with the market update. You know, overall, the interest rate market looks, you know, very good. We basically hit sort of all-time lows or right before the pandemic. And then rates kind of went up quite a bit after that and settled back down. So more or less, we're kind of at the same levels that we saw right before the pandemic, which are kind of very attractive to be considering this kind of, this kind of refinancing. So from an interest rate perspective, things look good. The actual transaction itself, what we're looking to do is to refinance the series of 2011 bonds. And when we talk about refinancing, we just basically mean going from a higher rate to a lower rate, keeping the same structure of the debt and just achieving those economic savings by replacing a higher rate with a, with a lower rate. Again, no change to the actual amortization of the existing bonds. And so here in the middle of the page, on the left-hand side, what I'll call columns one and two, that's just kind of a real brief summary of the 2011 bonds, about $33 million outstanding on those bonds. The call date is November 15th of this year, which seems like it's kind of far away, but when we back into sort of the guidelines that were allowed with the legal requirements by the federal government, we're kind of at that point right now to start beginning all the paperwork. The average rate on those bonds is just a little under 4%. So it's still a good rate when they were issued in 2011, which is now considerably lower based on today's economic conditions. And again, the final maturity date is 2029, so relatively short transaction, and we're going to keep that same mandate as well. We're not going to extend it. Right now, right below there, and number two, point number two, with our estimated interest rates at the moment, we're showing about 2.5 million of net savings. From a percentage standpoint or an efficiency standpoint, you may have heard me talk over the years about, you know, if refunding nets, say 2% of the amount we're refunding or 3% of the amount we're refunding, that's very good. Here, we're more than double that right now. But again, keeping in mind, these are just estimates until we're actually able to, to lock in, in the rates. And so right now, then on the right-hand side, the way those savings translate in column six in the yellow, a little bit in the 21-22 year, about 175,000. And then basically the bulk of the savings would occur in the 22-23 year and the 23-24 year. And then after that, the basically debt service would be more or less exactly what it is right now on, on those respective bonds. One thing that, you know, I did, I think I mentioned it briefly at our meeting last month, just to kind of give everyone a heads up for the resolution, the bonding resolution that would be considered on the 24th of this month. Typically, we like to put in there a savings floor that we cannot move forward with the transaction if the savings are below X amount. I think traditionally, we have talked about 2% savings. We still think that's very worthwhile to move forward with the transaction even at 2%. You know, obviously, we're going to get what the market bears. We're going to go through a competitive process to make sure that the district gets the, you know, the most advantageous rates. But I think from a, kind of the prudency standpoint, a general rule of thumb again is as long as the savings are, the net savings are north of 2%, that would give us the ability to, to move forward. If we see the market look a little shaky at the time, we're ready to price it, we just postpone it, push it off a week or two weeks or however long we need until things settle down. But again, we kind of like to have that floor in, in the resolution. So that's something that I would like to be able to tell bond counsel to include in the, in the resolution for your consideration for the May 20, May 24th meeting. But again, right now, we're well above that. We don't see anything in the near-term horizon that would lead to sustained higher interest rates. I think we're going to continue to see the volatility ups and downs on a daily basis. But long-term, you know, the next couple of months, I don't, I don't see anything, again, really drastically changing, but obviously, we're going to be in touch with your administration closely here, you know, for the duration of this transaction. So if we do see anything change, we'll, we'll let everyone know. And then from a timing standpoint, if you could just scroll up a couple inches, the last section I just wanted to go over, from a timing standpoint, again, here we are this evening, just for an update. May 24th, your bond counsel will be here to review the parameters resolution. And then a lot of work that we need to do along with your administration, kind of later in May and through June to get all the paperwork ready. We'd like to have the competitive sale, you know, probably sometime early, early July. Just need to kind of figure out between a July 4th holiday, when investors are going to be kind of prepared and ready to, to act on, on that sale. So it may fluctuate a little bit, again, just based on that holiday. And then we would close at the earliest possible date we're allowed to, which is August 17th, and then call the bond. So kind of a lot of work to do here in the next couple of months, but what we're putting before you is basically the most proactive timeline possible. We can always, like I said, slow down or put it on the shelf if you see the market not cooperating. And that resolution will give us that flexibility to, to be able to do that. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
What are interest rates right, like right now? I know you can't like give anything solid, but I actually don't know.
Yeah, well, the great, great question. When we had the handout from the April meeting, we kind of condensed this one a little bit. We were assuming interest rates, it looked like about a 1.75%. So again, very, very low. So we're more or less going from about a 3.85% down to about a 1.75% based on those estimates. So substantial drop with that amount of money, because that's what's generating those amount of savings. Any other questions or thoughts?
Are any other questions? Thank you very much. And board members, you'll see that that's slated for the next full board meeting. It's 4.09 on the agenda under the, under facilities. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you very much.
Good news.
Thank you, Scott.
The only other discussion item we have is 2.03, Meravian College Aquatics Partnership.
All right. Well, thank you very much again. So this is a, a partnership that's been brewing for a year and a half now. Athletic departments at our high schools and the college, looking at ways that could explore this partnership that one allows Meravian to begin a collegiate swim program, but then two, also preserve the programs at Liberty and those we support in the community in our pool for many, many years, and we can coexist together. So using our lease policy as a framework for the partnership to outline how this would work is a little bit different than just a standard lease, little, little cozy relationship than just running a basketball court. So we developed the NMOU, we'll see there this evening, that outlines some of how that worked between the ADs panned out in terms of preserving our own athletic programs, our academic programs, our community programs with the Special Olympics and our community athletics with the YMCA. So we'll be able to preserve all those and schedule use of the pool with Meravian. Using our lease policy as the guidance in terms of a cost, there's a cost in there, about $10,000 per year. In addition, the, the college is looking to purchase new blocks, starting blocks for the, for the eight-line pool. Now, there'll be some co-branding in the, in the natatorium at Liberty. Just to recognize the partnership with Meravian, there could be some St. Luke signage in there as well, I understand. But we want to preserve our Tuesday nights, the Special Olympics, the YMCA use in the winter concurrent to our, our swim programs as well as our gym classes during the day. So it's a lot of other things in the lease there, like details in terms of, you know, clearances for the athletes. And we're separating locker room usage, things like that, to keep things as safe as possible. But given the, the parameters, the requirements, we all believe it can, it can work out.
If I could just add to, you know, Meravian added the swimming as a way to expand their athletic programs. So our guideline was, as Mark kind of highlighted there, that not to displace any of our partners that are in their Special Olympics, the Y, our own programs, our, our gym classes, swimming gym classes, although students would probably advocate that would be okay. But, so, you know, not that, you know, we wouldn't have the Meravian swimmers coming and going, you know, you know, coming as our swimmers are leaving at night. They'll probably mostly practice at night or really early in the morning. There's a timeframe actually between when we're in early in the morning and school starts. So, so that was all, those are the parameters that we, you know, we can fit it in, college kids, they'll be flexible. If they have to come in at 10 o'clock at night to practice, they'll do that. But we won't disrupt the programs and our swim coach was involved in the discussions and understands and is on board with making that work. And it's a good way for us to partner with our partner, Meravian, when they need us, because they don't have these facilities. Our, our pool facility at Liberty is, is as good as many, or better than many Division III college teams. So it's a plus for Meravian, and it's a way for us to, you know, help out our partner.
Any other questions about this? So that will also be on the agenda. It's 4.01. That, are there any other discussion items beyond those that are on the agenda? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just, just a quick question. The items that are donated in kind, the starting, the, the diving blocks or starting blocks, I don't quite remember. And now that's on there. Those are permanent fixtures, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Sounds like we're getting a pretty good deal out of this. Just throwing it out there.
Sorry. Any other questions? I'll look around. Any other discussion items additional to the agenda?
No more discussion items. Nope.
All right, then we can go on to our information items. 3.01, the summer 2021 projects.
This is just the ongoing update of our, our projects planned for the summer. So can, happy to report that work at Farmersville began on Friday night, and they are back in force this evening. So that's underway. Looking forward to that, getting up to full speed. We have our projects at the bus garage and transportation and the Colonial Early Learning Center. We have pre-construction meetings scheduled for week after next to get those kicked off. And we will be opening bids on the rebid for their Brockham Middle School parking deck this Wednesday. So we are hoping to, you know, pending some favorable results there, hoping to bring back an agenda item at the HR committee next Monday to review those results.
Just thinking, I don't know if it's just me, but could you get a little closer to the microphone or speak a little louder? With the mask, it's just hard to pick it up. Thank you.
Any questions about summer projects? The season has already begun. All right, then with that, we can go to the agenda items. We heard about 4.01, that's the Meravian College Aquatics Partnership. 4.02 is the federal contracting requirement for HVAC renovations. That's at Farmersville. There's change order.
Yes, ma'am. There'll be a couple of change orders, actually, one for each contractor, the two prime contracts. So this goes back to our conversation over the last several months about using federal funds to pay for the Farmersville project. Because it was awarded just as that money was coming to the table, there are a few changes we have to make to the contract to make it compliant with the federal uniform guidance for being able to spend the money on the project. So in consultation with our solicitor, we were, developed some change orders with recent teams' help as well. So those change orders are there to make that project, once approved, federally compliant, allowing us to use the, the ESR funds for that project.
Any questions about that? All right, then 4.03, we have masonry repairs at Northeast Middle School, another deductive change order.
This goes back to last summer, one of last summer's projects. So just closing this out with the deductive change for nearly $4,000 back into the coffers.
Then we got 4.04, Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency Pandemic Disaster Relief Grant.
So at the onset of the pandemic, this, I guess the feds through the state made available grant monies for mitigation actions result of the pandemic. So we are looking to pursue these funds for expenses incurred a year ago when we resumed construction at Isa Packer and Spring Garden. So we're looking to recoup those, those funds. It's about $20,000, $24,000 worth, $23,000 worth through this Pima grant, and this is the application to kick that off.
Any questions about that? 4.05 is the Districtwide Security Management System Maintenance and Support Services Agreement. I'm going to excuse myself for this conversation. This is with my, the company I work with. So I just feel it would be appropriate for me to step out. So if you want to just text me, I'll step back. Perfect.
So it was nothing anyone said, I guess is what she's saying. So, right.
Are there any details about 4.05?
Sure, this is a continuation for the last three years of services we procured to maintain and manage our district-wide security management platform in terms of our access control with card readers and security cameras at all of our schools.
Any questions about that? All right. Let me just tell Emily she's clear. All right, let me just tell Emily she's clear. Sorry. All right, I think everyone just got it. My apologies, but so quick as I could get her back in here. All right, that brings us to 4.06, Emergency Transportation Services.
This is a, I guess, a standard for charter schools that are looking for our support in event of emergency if they have to evacuate their building. An agreement that just says we will, we will provide busing to shelter or transport children from their building to somewhere else. And then they will reimburse us for those costs.
Any questions about that? All right, 4.07, North Star Network Telephone Maintenance and Support Services Agreement.
This is a agreement for our telephone system and the vendor that has provided support for us renewal.
Any questions about that renewal? All right, then we have 4.08, Trash Removal Recycling Services Through Colonial Intermediate Unit 20 Joint Purchasing Bid.
IU is out to bid right now for trash services for us right now. So our refuse and recycling, that bid opening is on Wednesday. So just to put that on as a placeholder for now, we'll review those results and have those numbers filled in for the board meeting.
Yeah.
Have they been our vendor for this service for the for a while now, or is this a new contract?
It's an existing contract. The IU does the contracting for it because they're supporting multiple districts throughout the county. They're simply the procurement agent, if you will. Right now, you know, we have a advanced disposal as our current vendor and their existing three-year contract is up here at the end of the school year.
So for clarification, we allow the IU to find someone to do that for us?
Correct.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Any other questions? The only other item we have is 4.09. That's the General Obligation Bond Parameters Resolution, which we discussed just earlier. So with that, we were, yes, your question.
I actually had a quick question back on item 406, if that's all right.
Sure.
Thank you. So that memory in them, basically, the charter arts, if they for any reason need to evacuate their school, we would provide transportation, but then they have to reimburse us regardless of whether the reason was, you know, a scare called into the police or an actual gas leak or something like that. Is that the way I'm reading it?
Correct, yes. So if we're available, we can, you know, call our emergency drivers in. We would provide a vehicle to help them out or several vehicles, as the case may be, and they would be billed for the service, yes.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
Any other questions? That bring up, brings us back to courtesy of the floor. This could be about any item you would just speak with the board about here, or if you're listening through Zoom chat Q and A, that someone is watching, if we have anybody in there. Nope. All right, open forum, board members. Any items? All right, with that, we adjourn. We have to formally do that, but we adjourn facilities and we'll roll into the curriculum committee meeting. I don't know if you want a minute or two, Ms. Patrick. All right, no breaks. We'll roll right in. Okay.
Okay, welcome to the Board Curriculum Committee Meeting for May 10, 2021. As always, we have courtesy of the floor for agenda items only. If you're online, feel free to put it in the Q and A box or raise your hand. Not seeing anything. Dr. Silva, do we have any discussion items tonight?
No discussion items, Mrs. Patrick.
Okay, then we're going to head right into information items. We have 3.01 Educational Program Delivery in 2021, 2022.
Yes, as we know, 2021 was a challenging year, pandemic-related education, but we're heartened to see this afternoon, we have the vaccination clinics over at Liberty and Freedom. So 16-year-olds are now eligible. And if you haven't seen the newspaper update just today, it appears the CDC has approved for the Pfizer vaccine for children as young as 12 for emergency. So things are definitely looking up in terms of both vaccinations and the success of the mitigation that we've had at the elementary level since the spring break. So I know Dr. Roy sees the dashboard every day going up and down, but the general trend is down. And we're hopeful that that continues for the rest of this school year and allows us to do the planning for the 2021, 2022 school year, where our goal is to return students to school five days a week. So at the elementary level, we're seeing quite a lot of success with four days a week right now. So with proper mitigation, we're intending for them to be five days. Our principals will be contacting these parents whose children are currently in the completely virtual classroom at the elementary level, informing them of the plan for next year's return and handling any specific exceptions on a case-by-case basis. But school will look like school if all things go according to plan this summer. Likewise, at the secondary level this year, where we've had hybrid the entire time and where teachers were responsible for the caseload of their virtual students on their roster. Again, we would be back full-time next year with full mitigation. And we, of course, have our BASD Cyber Academy for those students who want that virtual option. And in our master schedule at Liberty and Freedom, we are adding some hybrid courses just because they're good courses and provide flexibility for students to take different offerings at different locations. So we're trying to make sure we incorporate the best of the pandemic learning, but also restore the best of what we know is teaching and learning under the best circumstances, which is students and teachers together in a classroom.
The best news I've heard all day, Dr. Silva. Thank you. Any questions or comments on this wonderful news, Dr. Becktony?
I know. Just curious if there was any plan to keep any e-classroom version at the elementary level in the fall, or if the idea is complete. I agree, this is amazing, amazing, amazing news. I just wanted to clarify that.
Not as a structured option like the way we discussed it at the beginning of this year with basically asking parents, hey, how do you, how do you want it? Do you have the, so school is in person next year. And in the conversations between the principals and the parents of those e-learners, if there's any exceptions that we need to make, those will be handed on, handled on a very thoughtful case-by-case basis.
Mr. Allozy?
I just, I just want to say, I think it's important for the taxpayers and our constituents to hear and see the lessons that have been learned through this, through this process and through, well, we've been through this, you know, what is it, 18, 19 months that we've been through the pandemic? And from this, some benefits that will be truly benefiting our students. So this is amazing. So kudos to our teaching staff and to the administrators that have saw that something like this could happen. I think it's great that we're offering these type of benefits and particularly for students who will be going on to trade school and other secondary offerings that they'll be equipped for a world that already offers these programs. So that's great.
Thank you, Mr. Allozy.
Get your relaxation nation. Finish the fight.
Okay, any other questions or comments for 3.01? Okay, next up, we have 3.02, BASD Assessment and Grading Committee Update.
Well, this will seem like normal educational business for the board. Changes in education in terms of a more robust curriculum, more responsive assessments and new technology tools are making it much easier to determine what a student knows and is able to do against the fixed standard. These new tools and insights stand in contrast with the traditional shopping basket of teacher-specific assignments all averaged together to produce a percentage and then agree. Two years ago, we convened a committee of middle school and high school teachers, some of our very best, to explore new, more modern models of assessment and grading to better support student learning. That group dove into the research in the field and read the works of Dr. Thomas Guskey, the nation's, if not the world's, leading scholar in the field of assessment and grading. We read and discussed the collective research in this book, what we know about grading, what works, what doesn't, and what comes next. And Dr. Guskey even came to the BASD and did full-day workshops with the committee and really fired us up as far as the process moving forward. Then the pandemic hit a month right after Dr. Guskey was here. But instead of derailing, excuse me, our assessment and grading committee, the heart-wrenching experiences of grading students fairly and accurately during the pandemic actually led to a larger embrace for the need of grading reform. This year, we had Dr. Guskey visit again, this time virtually, to do additional workshops for the committee and this time for the secondary administrators. We have established the need to change the way we develop and report student achievement in our middle schools and high schools. So now we're ready for the next book. Get set, go. Creating Successful Grading and Reporting Systems and bringing together the Assessment and Grading Committee and members of the secondary administration to develop the comprehensive plan for the next generation of grading and reporting in Bethlehem's middle schools and high schools. Key areas for our work over the next two school years will include continuing having Dr. Guskey and his contracted service, Grading RX, training our educators and helping us through the change process. Comprehensive surveying of students, teachers and parents to determine the current knowledge and attitudes towards grading and developing a gap analysis between current practice and best practice. Development of a purpose statement for grading and reporting aligned to standard and best practices and creating new report cards that will report separately academic achievement, A, B, C, Zs, but breaking out student work habits for separate indication. We'll also develop separate policies, procedures and incentives that will make grading and reporting more about improved learning than just traditional sorting and ranking. The Bethlehem Area School District's Academic and Social Emotional Recovery Plan has earmarked Esser's fund, grant funds to continue and turbocharge the needed work over the next two years. We will be in a position to pilot new secondary report cards and recognition systems in the 2022, 2023 school year with an eye on where full transition to a new report card for middle and high schools and a cum laude ranking system in 2023, 2024. Now, you may be saying to yourself, Jack, you're taking your sweet old time getting to where we need to go. But I will caution you that the effort will require a lot of training, a lot of consensus building, a lot of piloting and a lot of refinement, which we're ready to do. We will go slow so we can go far. But the pandemic has revealed that it is only a matter of when, not if, schools will be moving to a new form of assessment and grading that aligns to more modern learning and we're ready to do it the right way. So you'll be seeing some recommendations for that contracted service with Dr. Guskey's firm. I'll keep this as sort of a regular item on future curriculum committee updates so that we can see. But it's time to transition grading and assessment from just the way we've always done it because that's the way we know, to the way that we really should be doing it because it's the best way.
Let me just add, that was great, Dr. Silva, because, you know, grading is critical on, what does it mean? What does a grade mean? We all think, if we did, wrote down the definition right now, we'd probably all have different definitions. That's a problem. When we have grading systems that, for example, a quick example, if you're averaging, you have two assessments, kid gets a zero and then gets 100. You know, two months later, his average is 50. Another student gets a 50 and a 50, he has an average of 50. Who, who, who's the better student? Who's learned more? So the issues of how do we assess learning and performance against standards is really critical and it's a change. And places that have changed have found a lot more equity and understanding in their grading, but it's, but you get a lot of pushback because if it's not what we've always done, then we get pushed back, even though we know what we've always done isn't the the best way of tracking student progress. So Dr. Silva has connected with Dr. Guskey, who is, if in any category in education, that, you know, we could pick, you know, 100 different categories, the category of grading and assessment, there is one clear recognized authority in the country, and that's Dr. Guskey. So we're really, guy's amazingly accessible. And he will be working with us and his team to guide us through the process to make sure that when a student is assessed, it reflects their performance, what they've learned and not a bunch of other distractors that might be in there. So that's a long process, but we want to get it right.
Thank you. Any questions, comments on this? Dr. Silva, I'll just ask you a quick question, and I know there's more info to come on this. Has, is, are there also conversations about class rank? And if that's something that would continue or go away?
Yes, that, the world of academic incentives will come under review as well and moving to what they call in the assessment world, the cum laude version of assessment and of class ranking. So the old that there's only going to be one person left standing after all the statistical averaging of the averages together. That, that has proven to be, you know, perhaps more harmful than beneficial because there can only be one valedictorian when you decide it that way. But when you have an alternative system, still recognizing the importance of academic achievement, don't get me wrong, but there should be a larger category of students who qualify at the mag, just think of college, like magna cum laude, summa cum laude, will be able to have further and more, more accurate gradations of student achievement than the current system of valedictorians and salutatorians.
That's wonderful to hear. When I, not to age myself, but when I graduated in 1994, my high school actually got rid of class rank, which to me then was, you know, looking back was unheard of. And I had a very small graduating class. So the now see us have a graduating classes of 600 or 700. And like you said, to have that one person standing, that that's a phenomenal move in the right direction, I would say. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anyone else with any comments on this? Okay, next up, we have agenda items for the May 24, 2021 regular board meeting. First, we have 4.01, Title I and Title II Non-Public School Services, Colonial Intermediate Unit 20 Agreement Amendments.
Pretty much as described on the public information there, Mrs. Patrick. These are in accordance with Title I and Title II agreements, and they're presented to the board for its approval.
I'm sorry, next up, 4.01, Vista Higher Learning, New Spanish Curriculum Purchase.
Moi bien. We have one of the better achieved, one of the lesser-known achievements, although I think I say this every board curriculum committee meeting, is that over the years, we've had the curriculum review and revision cycle for our materials, which at one time were pretty aged. But over the last review cycle, five or six years, we've been able to, in all the core subjects, math science, social studies and English, now it's study sync. And now with the largest elective, which is Spanish, which is by far the largest world language and the largest elective area, upgrading the educational materials and the curriculum that really was really required. These are very, Vista Higher Learning was the result of a comparison of different products in the industry. We had a team of teachers look at it, compare presentations by different vendors and look for things like technological adaptability, different grade levels or reading levels, the ability to transition back and forth into the native language, how much it applies to native speakers. And one of the nice things in with Vista Learning and every other new digital product, especially when all of our students possess Chrome And one of the nice things in uh, with Vista Learning and every other new digital product, especially when all of our students possess Chromebook, is the audio now is a real game changer. So in an area like Spanish where a lot of the, a lot of the learning happens when you're hearing and reciting and repeating and changing the pace and the timbre and everything about learning how to pronounce, pronounce words in Spanish, uh, th, this curriculum is a rocket ship in those areas. So whether it's tele, technological innovation, the quality of the programming, or, you know, the, the content and the adaptability to all types of students, native speaking or uh, new Spanish speakers. Our uh, recommendation is that we uh, enter into contract with Vista Higher Learning and their product is like every other product these days, buy a license for six or seven years, you use the consumables. And um, we will expect to see uh, quite a uh, higher level of engagement and success in Spanish because we, we, we really need these materials.
Gracias. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none. Next up, we have courtesy of the floor for any item. For those at home, feel free to hop on to Zoom, the Q and A, type in a question or raise your hand. We don't see anything at this time. So next up, uh, open forum. Mr. Lozey?
Dr. Roy, Dr. Silva, I don't know, um, if you're looking to do this for our next uh, full board meeting. But I would love to know how we're doing. I know we talked a little bit just now in terms of numbers, but I remember when we were talking a month ago about opening school, there was a lot of trepidation and hesitation and concern with space and layouts and things of that. How have we navigated that? How people responded? And how is that going at the moment?
Great question. Thank you. Um, it's gone well. At the, you know, the, we're talking about the elementary level. When very smoothly, people have figured out their new routines. In the cases when we've had a, a student who was positive and who was in school, we have more close contact. So, you know, we go by the desk, now we go the six feet. So instead of just one person, it's gonna be two people, for example. So we've had, in those cases, we've had more close contacts, but those close contacts haven't then become positive. And so the more the cases go down, the less that issue goes away. But we knew that would be the challenge. If you, if you're within six feet, then you're gonna be a close contact of somebody. Uh, beyond that, they're figuring out the, the cafeterias and so forth. Um, so really it's gone, um, you know, just like the beginning of the year surprisingly uh, well. Um, I, I did want to mention too, reminded me that we had over, over 200, I, um, we were still vaccinating till six o'clock. So uh, between the Liberty and Freedom locations, had over a couple of hundred people be vaccinated. Um, and that included parents too. Um, so it wasn't just students, but my theory is anybody in the community uh, gets vaccinated, it's helpful. Um, I was told there were some parents that came in just to kind of check it out and said, all right, looks, you know, my kid's getting it. All right, I'll get it. Um, so that's, that's good and we'll do that again. And if the, did I hear Dr. Silva, is, is, is it down to 12 now?
For emergency, uh, CDC.
That was announced today. I, I hadn't seen that. Um, so now we'll look at doing a middle, middle, 12 and up clinic uh, with the health department. Again, the health department continues to be a fantastic partner. Also, when sports physicals are done in June, uh, St. Luke's will be setting up to provide vaccines as well. So any way we can um, help get the community vaccinated. I think for some people, going to your school is more comfortable than going to Wind Creek or going to some other, a clinic somewhere. So, um, so if this worked, we'll, we'll partner to do more.
That's great news. Anyone else for open forum? Okay, seeing nothing else, may I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mrs. Schenkel. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Shively. Thanks so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you.